Twenty. We have one tabled matter on the agenda and then we have eight scheduled items. The Board reserves the right to not hear or open up any new agenda items after 10:00 PM. So, we'll try and move along as fastidiously as we can. So, before we get started, could you please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a foundation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Okay. First thing we're gonna do, this is a little unusual because we have a few of the Board members on a teleconference. So, what I'm gonna do is call Roll. And I'll start with Mr. Schneider because he's sitting here.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Hauser? Turn off the mute on your phone. Yep, okay, thank you. Okay. Ms. Vogel?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. DiNoto?
Aye.
Okay. And we also have Josh Artuso with us, Jeff Benway, and Mr. DiMarco, Town Attorney. So, the first item, you know what, let's, it's been so long, we didn't have any meetings in the month of April. So, Corinne, if you would reread the Lake Road application into the record. That'll add, he's changed the setback. So, that's gonna, that's gonna change the application as well. So, whenever you're ready, Corinne.
Okay. The application is at fourteen twenty Lake Road accessory building. Located at fourteen twenty Lake Road, applicant Christian Bigg is requesting an area variance associated with the construction of a twenty-four foot by thirty-six foot detached garage on a three-point-five-six acre parcel, given SBL number zero-three-six point zero-three dash one dash nine point one, located within a waterfront development district to allow the following. A, a thirty-nine foot front setback where seventy feet is required pursuant to section two-two-five dash twenty-two C sub-two sub-A in section two-two-five dash ten B sub-six sub-A sub-one of the code of the town of Webster. B, proposed location is closer to the front property line than that of the rear footprint of the principal residence under section two-two-five dash three-six A sub-two of the code of the town of Webster.
Thank you. Mr. Bigg, you wanna?
So, Christian Bigg at fourteen twenty Lake Road. And as stated, I'm looking to get the variance to place the garage in front of the back quarter of the house. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the Board's in agreement that a variance is kinda needed for the project without removal of some historic structures. So, I think the debate is kinda over where, to what extent the variance goes. My original proposal, back of, what is it, March tenth or whatever it was, I was looking based on the suggestion of my builder to center the garage doors on the turnaround, which required the building to start five feet south of the edge of the turnaround. And because of the, kinda the funny layout of the property that put the back corner, I think it was thirty feet in from the right-of-way or something like that, the original proposal. During that meeting, it was suggested that I move the building to line up with the front of the house. And someone had suggested a compromise of moving the building to the edge of the turnaround. So, my original request was to kinda have it maybe four or five feet to the south of that turnaround. So, after that meeting, I went home, got out the measuring stick and kinda staked it out and tried to get a visual of what the Board had kinda suggested. And at the same time, kinda take a look at that compromise of starting it at the corner of the turnaround instead of my originally proposed location. And what I found was if I started where the Board proposed, I kinda worked my way to the first garage door, to the second garage door, and then to the end of the building, that puts the edge of the building on, it's so hard without, those of you that saw the house, appreciate it, but it puts the edge of the building in front of our bay window. So, we have a large window that faces the woods that we bought where the garage is going. And it also puts the first bay, the first garage door bay, at a location that is kinda inaccessible based on the radius turn of a vehicle. So, then I looked at the compromise, which is starting the building at the edge of the turnaround, and did the same thing, worked up my first garage door, the second garage door, and then the edge of the building, and put stakes at all those locations. And that puts the edge of the building at the beginning of the bay window. So, the view out of the bay window, you're gonna see the building, but it's not in the way of the window. You know, you're still looking out into the woods. And that puts the second bay, the garage door bay, in a location that could still be accessed based on the radius turn of the car. So, my current proposal is to go with that compromise position, which starts the turnaround at, or starts the building at the corner of the turnaround, which puts the back corner of the building, I think it's thirty-eight or thirty-nine feet off the right-of-way. It's buried in woods that will forever remain wild. We bought that entire plot, and beyond that building, the property drops off. So, if anyone ever was to separate that lot out, you know, without destroying, the structures that are gonna be currently on there, there's no way to put a house there or anything. So, there's no way that that plot will ever be anything but woods. So, from the east side, six months out of the year, the building is not gonna be able to be seen, really. It's gonna be buried in the woods. And I really have two neighbors across Lake Road that would even have view of it. And the eight feet about, it's maybe seven, eight feet difference between my, my new compromise proposal and what the Board had suggested, I don't think would be visually different for someone driving by the house. You know, it's not like it's tens of feet, you know, it's like a seven, eight feet shift. But that seven, eight feet shift for me means that I still have the view of the woods that we bought. It means that I still have access to that, that second bay based on the radius turn of the car. And it fits kinda the, what I, what I believe, it fits the layout of the driveway and kinda makes sense. You know, it still puts the, the main part of the building next to our front door. The main part of the building's gonna be on the turnaround. It's, to me, visually and economically, it makes sense. And that's what I've got.
For the record, identify yourself. I should've had you do that.
You did, at the beginning, but Christian Bigg, fourteen twenty Lake Road.
Okay, excellent. Now, last, last meeting, when you appeared, a couple of the members were indicating that they'd like to see the front of the garage no closer to the road than the front of the house. Now, they may have had a chance to visit the property, talk to you, maybe formulate another opinion, I'm not sure. So, what I wanted to do is maybe we'll, you know, we'll poll the Board one by one, and they could, they could express their opinion. What we're looking at initially, he had a thirty-one, proposed thirty-one foot front setback off of the Lake, uh, Lake Road property line. And what he's proposing now is a thirty-nine foot front setback. I, I did some, some calculation, and for it to be even with the front of the house, it would have to be a forty, a forty-eight foot front setback rather than thirty-nine, which is another nine feet. So, what, what Mr. Bigg is saying that, that if he moves it back to that position, the negatives are he has to move the driveway, and he may block the view out his bay window outside of the house. So, Eric, you're, you're right next to me. Why don't, why don't you express your thoughts first?
Well, if it was up to me and money was no object, I'd do it differently. But under the circumstances, the compromise is probably as good as we're going to get. So, that's my opinion at this point. We really, we really can't move it back a lot further without having to reconfigure the driveway as well as, as obstructing the bay window. My solution to turn it sideways and, you know, bring the turnout further out, it's financially burdensome. And I can see the point about moving it another nine feet further back, also becoming a reconfiguration issue plus the obstruction of the views. So, under the circumstances, I'll go with the compromise.
Yep. Uh, Don, would you like to chime in on this one? Mute?
Uh, yeah.
There you go.
Knocked on a door, no one was there.
Okay.
I believe there's a little delay here. But I, I think it's better, you know, there's, there's a little bit of a compromise provided. I personally like it even with the front of the house because the parcel is very large. Looking at the economic, economics always plays a role in it. It's, it's a little better in my view. That's, that's where I'll leave that.
Okay. Uh, Corinne?
Yes, I visited the parcel again to visit the two different stakeout locations, the thirty-nine foot setback from the right-of-way and also at the setback where the even with the front of the house. And the one thing that I noted is if the garage were moved even with the front of the home, it limits, um, it, it limits the ability to back out of the garage to leave the property if there's another vehicle in, in the driveway. The driveway goes up to approximately the area of the old stone wells that's shown on the survey map. And then the property drops off. So, extending the driveway beyond that, you get into some topography issues. And as there were a couple of vehicles in the driveway when I was visiting, I noticed that if you have enough, in order to have enough room to back out of the driveway if there's another vehicle there, and, and actually have usable driveway space, a thirty-nine foot setback is really what makes sense. It also aesthetically to me makes it less of a wall of buildings where you've got the front of the house, the front of the garage all in mine. I personally like a little bit of step and a little bit of dimension to it. And with the depth of the woods, I, I don't think anyone from the road is going to notice the difference if it's, if it's thirty-nine feet or if it's forty or forty-five feet. So, I, I agree with the compromise position that the applicant came back with.
Okay. Thank you. Robert, do you have an opinion, Bob?
Um, I listen to everybody's comments. Ideally, I think we talked about the fact that we would like to see the structure pushed back, at least even with the, the front of the, of the home. As far as I'm concerned, everybody touched on my concerns. I think the compromise is acceptable.
Okay. One thing I will point out is that the, the right-of-way line is a straight line, and the road is actually curved. So, if you measured, if, if the right-of-way line was curved, uh, parallel with the road, that would've probably added another eight or ten feet to that setback. But they go, it goes point to point to point in straight lines, and he's on a curve. So, actually, the setback to the road pavement is actually, you know, substantially more than it is on a typical road where the, where the right-of-way line's parallel with the street. So, um, let's see. Eric, I'm gonna put you on the spot since you showed up. Do you wanna go through the standards, please?
And I don't have my sheet with me, do you?
That's all right, that's all right. Yeah, hell.
Thanks.
Where am I sheet?
Okay. Request is not out of character with the neighborhood. In fact, it's not going to be visible from the neighbors. So, that is sort of a moot point. No detriment to nearby properties. There aren't any. In fact, there's a parking lot for Nature Walk on one corner. There's one property further across on the other corner, and the rest of it's wide open. Benefit is not achievable by any other method. There are some methods available. They would cause another detriment to the homeowner in terms of his view out of the windows and also increase the financial costs substantially. Request is not substantial. Well, given the zone that we're in, we're talking a seventy-foot requirement. But typically, in this area and because it's screened from the roads, it, it sounds substantial on paper, but as Mr. Barone pointed out, it's not as ridiculous as it would seem looking at the, at the map. Physical or environmental impacts, there would be none. The difficulty certainly self-created, but most are. I don't see it as being an undesirable change. Again, there's no neighbor saying that it's a problem, no public comments to that effect. And aid I always found is redundant.
You know, before, before anyone makes a motion, the phone was ringing a few minutes ago. I, I don't know if it was related to this application or not. So, this meeting is open to the public, and the call-in number is eight-seven-two-seven-zero-one-one. If someone has any comments for or against this application, call in at this time. Okay. I, I really didn't think we'd have any. We didn't have any, any neighbors with comments the last meeting for this application. So, with that, I, oh, excuse me, we gotta do seeker on this one. Let's see. Pursuant to NYCR six-seventeen point five of the Environmental Code, I make a motion for a type-two seeker, and I, I'll call Roll here because we can't all answer once. Eric?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we have a second, Eric. Obviously.
Aye.
Yes, aye. Don?
Aye.
Okay. Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So, with that, I'll make a motion. Let's see. I'll make a motion to grant a thirty-nine foot front setback variance where seventy feet is required under section two-twenty-five dash twenty-two C sub-two sub-A and two-twenty-five dash ten sub-B sub-six sub-A sub-one of the code of the town of Webster. And B, uh, a variance allowing the garage to be closer to the front property line than that of the rear footprint of the principal residence under section two-twenty-five dash thirty-six sub-A sub-two of the count, of the code of the town of Webster. Do I have a second?
I'll second it since I'm sitting here.
Eric's gonna, I'm gonna give Eric a workout tonight because he's sitting here with me. Okay, let's call Roll here for the vote. Don?
Aye.
Okay. Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I, I vote for it as well. So, now, there's one, one item that came to light when I, when I talked to you on your property. You bought that other property as a separate, it's a separate lot, correct?
It was, yes.
And, um, we, yeah, the only does allow garage on a lot unless it's combined with the principal lot where your principal residence is. So,
That's what I, that's what I.
This whole thing would be contingent on you combining those lots and filing the paperwork for that?
It's all done. I'm just waiting on the town of Webster to give me a tax ID number, whatever it is that they have to do.
Okay, great.
That's all right.
Cool. The only other thing is that you need a town building permit.
All right.
Thank you very much. Meaningful construction in one year.
Meaningful construction within one year of the variance. If you, if you're gonna be out of here, you have to come in for the variance all over again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Corinne, do you wish to read in the first scheduled matter? And we'll see, the applicant should be in here very shortly. I think Corinne's gonna go first. Go send them out of the waiting room.
Okay. Northridge Church signage. Located at seven-eight-zero Salt Road, applicant Northridge Webster LLC is requesting an area variance to allow a two-hundred-and-ninety-eight square foot building-mounted sign on a nine-point-three acre parcel, given SBL number zero-six-six point zero-three dash one dash eight-four point one, located in an industrial district under section one-seven-eight dash seven-A of the code of the town of Webster.
Thank you. Now, give us your name and address, please, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Okay. My name's Amy Catalano. I'm with Vital Signs, representing Northridge Church tonight. We're proposing a building-mounted sign that is larger than what the code allows. It's a non-lit sign. The setback from Salt Road, it's on seven-eighty Salt Road, it's almost five-hundred feet back. So, we felt it necessary to make it larger so it's visible from the road as people pull in.
Okay. So, the church is leasing the back part of the building only?
The church owns the building.
Oh, they own the whole part?
Yeah, they do. And they put an addition on in the back. That's the auditorium where they're gonna have all sorts of things. But there's youth ministries, there's activities during the week, and adult activities in the evening. So, it's important for, that the, that area is noticeable with that signage because it is an industrial park. So, they can pull in there and they'll be able to see the sign. And again, it's not, it's not an internally lit sign, it's not a lit sign. There's gonna be lighting back there. But the white sign against the deep tones that they've chosen for their facade will stand out. It just needs to be bigger. Cause we, we showed it to them at a size that was too, too cold, that would fit within, and it was just way too small. So, we're hoping that we can get this passed tonight.
Now, I, I don't know, I didn't hear this. How far is that part of the, is that two-hundred-and-ninety-two feet from the road?
Four-hundred-and-ninety-two.
Four-hundred-and-ninety-two feet?
Yeah.
The faci, the facade of the building where the sign is going to be is four-hundred-and-ninety-two feet.
Yes.
Okay. That's quite the setback.
It's quite ways back.
Okay.
I think, I think, I think that distance from the road, you almost have to have a sign that large to, to be, you know, readable from the road. It's, you know, most, most businesses are maybe a hundred feet from the road or a hundred fifty feet.
Right. Yep. And there is, we did do a rendering, um, to scale from the road. I don't know if you guys, you all have that? I submitted it with the paperwork.
Yeah, I do, anyway.
So, that shows from the distance, from the road, from that four-hundred-and-ninety-two feet, what, what we're proposing, what it would look like on the building. And it looks appropriate.
Okay.
It's appropriate.
Okay. Now, I see, I see something for a monument sign here also.
That went before the planning board last week.
That went before the planning board last week.
And it was passed.
And it's twenty-five feet from the road, and it meets the size requirements. So, that's not something we have to worry about.
Not for us. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call on the Board members one by one for, you know, their feedback. So, let's start, start with Don, please.
Okay. If, if it has a freestanding sign by the road, I really don't see a need to enlarge on the building sign.
Okay. So, you're saying the monument signs should be adequate, is that?
That's what I'm saying, yes. The, the entire facility's owned by the church. So, so it's, you know, it should have proper advertisement on that.
Okay. Okay, now, it says here that the, you're allowed a two-hundred-and-twenty square foot. And you want two-ninety-four?
Correct.
Did, did you try drawing it with the two-twenty to see what it looked like from the street?
Yep. That would give us, I think the diameter of the logo was closer to eight feet. It was just, um, it was just too, it was just too small for the setback. And the thing is about, yes, there'll be a monument sign as you pull in, but there's quite a spant of building because it's a complex and there's other tenants there. So, to avoid confusion and to route people that are heading to the Northridge Church, you know, they need to go exact, they need to know where to go, um, along that drive.
Okay.
And that would be the only indication, is that sign at the end on their facade.
Okay. Now, let me just take a moment to have our Board members that are at home mute their phones because we're getting a little bit of background noise. Makes it difficult to hear in the boardroom. Okay. Uh, Corinne, could we get your opinion on this, please?
Yes. Um, I did visit the property. It is setback quite a bit from the road where the, the new construction is. Um, I guess I would like to at least see the comparison of, um, a two-hundred-and-twenty square foot sign is still significant, um, what that would look like as opposed to the, the almost three-hundred square foot sign.
Okay.
It, it, I mean, it looks, um, partial to the, the size of the building and the size of that wall. Um, but, but it is also a significant difference. And there is a sign up by the road as well. So.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Uh, could I ask the, the call-in folks, we're gonna give everybody, we're gonna give people a chance to call in when the time is appropriate. So, if you could just hold your calls until I ask for them, please. Robert, Robert, can we hear from you?
Yeah, actually, Don, I mentioned my only question. If, if the sign on the building was the only sign, I can understand it and I probably would be in favor. But considering they, they're gonna put a monument sign up by the road, I don't, I don't particularly understand why after exceed the size, uh, the code offers on the building.
Okay.
But Don has already mentioned it. I feel the same way. I, I don't understand it. The monument sign directs them in the deck, and the sign of the building, if it was, if it was compliant, would, would sit, would tell the visitors where, where to go.
Okay. Okay, now, what I'm hearing from a few of the members, can you, would you be willing to table and, and do a concept showing the two-hundred-and-twenty foot, square foot sign so we could see the comparison? You may very well have a point, but without seeing it, we haven't, we don't have the benefit of that. You do, but we don't.
That makes sense.
So, if you would, if you would, you know, table for tonight and bring it back to the next meeting with, maybe get it to us ahead of the meeting so we have time to study it.
The, the one comment I want to point out, though, is that we ran into a similar situation with Webster Plaza where they have monument signs in multiple places. And then all of the tenants were coming in asking for signage on the buildings themselves to help identify. So, while I can see that there's some redundancy there, I don't, being in an industrial zone, I don't see that it's going to have adverse impact on the, on the neighborhood at all. So, I, I would tend, tend to look at this a little more favorably for that reason. We do have other buildings that have both monument signs and facade signs on them. It's not a whole knockout of that whole area. There's the facade- There's the facade of the building showing through, so it, it's bigger, but it's not what I would think is obtrusive.
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from the board is that we're not opposed to the sign on the building at all. The, the only question is the size of the sign. And without comparative photographs or representation, it's tough, as you say, Eric, Eric has, you know, he doesn't think that'd be obtrusive. Don, Corinne, and Bob all had some concerns with it. So, if you would table and come back with the revised artwork so we can see a comparison, that would be very helpful.
I'd be happy to do that. I don't, I don't like hearing that the monument sign is kinda serving as a detriment with, to this because it is the only sign on that property. It's the only monument sign on that property. And there's more than one entrance, and so that's needed just so that, because the only way to enter that church is through that one entrance. We needed a sign there. Because no other driveway would bring them into that area. And, but yes, I'd be happy to certainly submit a sign to scale that stays within code. It doesn't change the distance from the road, which is a huge distance. And, you know, of course, you know, I'm at a, I work at a sign company, we're familiar with, you know, pretty much all the businesses around here. And the directory signs they have, the monument signs, the building signs, you know, everybody's got ample signage. And I think that that would be the necessary case here, that they have ample signage, you know?
Okay, well, I guess, I guess we'd still like to see that artwork.
Absolutely.
And, so, would you like to make a request to table?
Sure.
Till next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, applicant makes a request. Usually, we go all in favor and say aye, but I'll, I'll call roll again. Eric?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Yeah. Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Okay, so you're tabled, so you're on, you know, on the agenda for the next, next meeting. So, if you can get us that paperwork ahead of the meeting so we have a time to go out to the site and look at it and make a comparison.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Yep, I'll send it to Josh. May 26th.
Thank you. Now, I, I just want to remind the members at home to mute their phones in between calls because it's quite loud here. We don't do that, we're having trouble hearing, so.
Okay, that's positive.
Barry, can you, can you have them talk over the microphone or she was difficult to hear?
What's that again, Bob?
Can she, uh, can, can you talk over the microphone while, if they're there?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll remind them.
I had a, I had a hard time, I had to send the owner.
I, I understand, yeah, she was standing about a foot or two away from the microphone. I'll, I'll remind the applicants to speak into the microphone, all right? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. Okay, Corinne, would you like to read the next agenda item, please?
Yes. 785 gravel road accessory structure. Located at 785 gravel road, applicant Lucille Lamb is requesting an area variance to allow a 48 foot rear setback where 50 feet is required and a five foot side setback where 15 feet is required in order to legalize an existing 400 square foot accessory storage structure on a 0.68 acre parcel having SBL number 078.08-1-2 located in an R3 single family residential district under sections 225-11B sub 5 sub B and section 225-11B sub 5 sub C of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay, thank you. Now, I just heard from a couple of our members, they did, they can't hear unless you speak right, right into that microphone.
Okay.
You can pull that toward you a bit, too, if you want. They sanitized it.
I've got a pretty good voice, so.
Okay, good, 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 good. Now, state your name, address, and phone.
I'm Liam Richardson, I'm representing my aunt, Lucille Lamb.
Okay. Do, do we have some sort of documentations?
Is Josh here?
Yeah, yes, we do have.
We do, okay, thank you, thank you.
Authorization for him to speak on her behalf, yes. We have an existing accessory structure on the property that doesn't meet the setbacks. Basically, we need a variance to.
Now, how did you come to find out that it didn't meet the setback? What, what brought you?
Well, recently, there was work done on the house and the accessory structure also got re-roofed and sited. And at that time, the building inspector came in, and when he came in, he informed my aunt that the building did not, you know, meet those requirements. Or no, I know what it was, she didn't have a building permit for it. So, when she applied for the building permit for the existing structure, that's when we realized that it didn't meet the requirements.
So, you did work that out, she provided a survey map to the building inspector and that's when he noticed they're too close to the line?
Correct.
Now, did you folks build that garage?
Um, my, my uncle built the garage.
And his, your uncle doesn't own the property anymore?
Uh, actually, no. He's, he's deceased.
How, when was the building built?
Originally, I am not sure. I know he's been gone for seven years, so.
I, I visited the site and the young man that came out said that it was here when we bought the house.
He just, right, there's new owners, you met the new owners?
Okay. So, Lucille Lamb is not, was the owner, is the owner, I'm not, I'm not following.
Lucille, the, the house was sold on April 2nd, but at, of, of 20, okay? At the time, she was in the hospital. So, we did close on the house, but she promised the new owners that she would handle this matter for them.
Oh, wow.
That's interesting.
Does she have standing at this point to represent them without written?
I, I have to defer to Mr. DiMarco on this one. Should the owner be?
Yeah, so Barry, let me, let me make sure that we got, we got a clear record here. So, the, the applicant, in terms of the paperwork that you have before you, the zoning application, is that signed by the owner or a representative of the owner? No.
I think I've got that. Not the present owner.
It looks like at the time that the application was filed, Mrs. Williams was still the owner of the property.
Okay.
Then, gentlemen, Barry, who is the, who's the signator of the application?
Lucille Lamb is the signature.
Yep.
Okay, so she made the application and, and a representative that is before the board tonight is an agent of the new owner, is that?
No, or the new owner.
No.
Not the previous owner.
Previous owner.
He's related to Lucille Lamb, right?
Correct.
He's representing Lucille. So, the question is, I guess, do we need the new owners at this point in time to make the presentation or at least give them the authority to represent them?
Well, I, I think ultimately, we're certainly going to need that, and I'm assuming that that's gonna be easily had after we're finished because the building is in violation of the zoning code. So, my recommendation would be, since the applicant is there, we have the materials, let's hear what they have to, to tell us. And then I would table any decision pending the filing of an authorization from the owner that they want us to proceed with a decision in this regard.
Okay, that makes sense, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. So, as I said, when I went to the house, I walked up, knocked on the door, gentleman comes out. I said, where, I, I looked at the, the garage in the back, identified myself, and he said, well, it was there when we bought it. So, that's, that's how I, how I perceive the property. Now, you represent the previous owner. Now, obviously, I don't know, I don't know if that, there was a permit for that, I mean.
Can I, can I add something? You know, we were hoping to get this all settled, you know, prior to the COVID, to this whole, we were hoping to have a board meeting and have the variance settled before the closing of the house, obviously. That was, that was the intent.
Well, yeah, no, we're not faulting you for that, we're just saying that, given the chain of events, we now have to make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Gotcha.
Well, per Mr. DiMarco's recommendation, let's talk it through. We'll ask for public comment. I, when I visited the, the site, there were two other garages too close to their property lines right in the backyard. One to the left and one to the right, I guess. And they're kinda hidden back in the backyards where nobody sees them from the streets, so it's not the type of thing that the building inspector would readily notice until someone comes in with a map. So, I guess, we, we've run into these before where things are built without a permit or built with a permit and no survey map after the fact. Unfortunately, they change hands and the new owners are, are stuck with the problem, is what it amounts to.
Yeah, well, not quite in this case. I mean, Mrs. Lamb was, is trying to.
He's doing what?
Get it all straightened out, so, so it's not even, it was there when we bought it. I mean, but yeah, to your point, these, these houses are all, were built a long time ago and for all we know, this footprint was pre-existing non-conforming back before 68. Not exactly sure, but, I mean, there might have been another building there, but the community standards that you pointed out would lead somebody to believe that that was what was done, so.
It's actually a nice looking garage.
Yeah, and it, and it's not infringing on anybody, so, I mean, that's, that's my two cents worth there. It's five foot's enough space to maintain it. It's, so it's just a matter of, and it's too big to move.
Well, it's, it's at an angle with the property line, so that five foot is just a point, the corner of the building, not the whole side of the building. Don, do you have, have any comment? You've seen a lot of these guys.
The structure exists. Uh, and, you know, unfortunately, it was built probably without any permits and town knowledge. My main concern would be to be able to maintain it on all sides of that and they're able to do that, it was tucked away in the woods. I, I really don't see any issues with it.
Okay, thank you. Corinne?
I, I don't see any issues with it, it's been there for as long as anyone can recall. And we do have five feet on the side property line. It is just a point contact, so there is room to get around it, to maintain it, which is always the concern of this board. And then as far as the rear setback, it's really only a two foot difference between what, what is required and, and what it actually is. It looks like from the application that it originally was a shed and then the shed was added to. So, initially, probably it, it complied at least by size in the rear setback. And then, is it enlarged to became too big to be considered a shed? It's, it's been there, there's no complaints from any of the neighbors and you'd be hard pressed to see it from any of the neighborhood homes.
Yep. Robert, do you have an opinion?
I mean, uh, the members have actually summed it up, but we, and we usually look at a, a situation like that, uh, from a point of view, if, if they've come to us prior to building construction and then they asked for a variance, would we, would be granted? And in this case, I believe that we go five feet is something that we turn to the path. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. This meeting is open to the public, anyone who wishes to call in, the phone number here is 872-7011 if you want to call in and comment for or against this application. We'll just wait a moment.
You need a tape of the Jeopardy music.
That's what we need, we need, we need our own, our own theme song here, is it, make it interesting. While, while we're waiting, let's see if anybody wants to call in, I'll run for the standards. The request is not out of character with the neighborhood, as I said before, there are two other similar size accessory buildings, right, 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 they're neighbors on almost either side. And they, although I, I don't know for a fact, they looked like they were too close to their property lines as well, I, I can't say for sure. There is no detriment created nearby properties. The shed's been there for a number of years without any, without any issues, it can't be seen from the street. And frankly, I, I had to walk around the house to even see the shed, so. And it's pretty woodsy in the backyard, I don't, I don't see any visual impact or negative impact. And if it is not achievable by any other method, the building's there. I mean, if it was, if wasn't there yet, we'd probably discuss how far from the line that ought to be, but the building's there, so it's not achievable by any other method.
Yeah, it's too big to move.
It's too big to move. And the, the request is not substantial, it's, it is somewhat substantial, however, the closest point is just a corner of the building, then the building pulls away, there's plenty of room to work on the building, to maintain it, and so on and so forth, without going on a neighbor's property. Difficulty, it's not self-created, it was built by, by an uncle who's no longer with us. They kind of inherited the problem. It's not an undesirable change in any way, it's a nice looking shed, frankly. And again, it's not significant because of the fact that only one corner of the building is five feet from the line and then, then the rest of it is far enough away. So, the rear setback is also requires a variance, but that's only a foot and a half or so, so that's, that's pretty minimal.
Let me, let me ask one thing. It's, it sounds as though the board would basically approve this as it stands. Could we vote on this and approve it and condition it that within 30 days, we had a notarized letter from the current owner's stating that Mrs. Lamb was, you know, made the request on his behalf?
Yes, this is John DiMarco, town attorney, yes, that's exactly what I'm gonna recommend. It is approved of the contingent on the submission of a notarized statement from the current owner authorizing the application and the agent who was before the board tonight to obtain that, that variance.
Very good. So, we need to do seeker here, so I'll make a motion for a type, type two seeker, 617 of the environmental code. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Eric seconded that. I know, let's do roll again. Don?
Aye.
Corinne?
Aye.
Okay, Robert?
Aye.
Okay, so that's seeker. We haven't had any call-ins, they've had ample time to, from the public, so with that, I'll make a motion and we'll condition it, as Mr. DiMarco said, on the current owner's acceptance and notarized statement that, that, that these folks here are able to represent them for this variance. Is that correct, John?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to allow a 48 foot rear setback where 50 feet is required and a five side, five foot side setback where 15 feet is required in order to legalize an existing 400 square foot accessory storage structure on a 0.68 acre parcel having SBL number 078.08-1-2 located in this R3 single family residential district under sections 225-11B sub 5 sub B and 225-11B sub 5 sub C of the code of the town of Webster. Conditioner? We got a second? Okay. I'll, I'll call roll. Was that, was that you, Don, or Bob?
It's Corinne.
Oh, correct. That would really need Barry. I'm sorry, Corinne, sorry about that, okay, Don?
I.
Okay, Eric?
I.
Robert?
I.
Okay, Corinne? And I?
I.
I. And Barry, all right, okay. All right, so, are you gonna communicate with the current owner?
Yes, I will.
Okay, tell him they got the variance, but they need to visit the Town Hall, talk to Josh Artuso at the Town Hall. Okay, he'll, he'll, uh, make sure that they, uh, they sign and notarize the correct paperwork to make this thing legitimate. Make it a go, all right?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. All right, um. Are we, are we doing okay there? Okay, uh, we got a thumbs up from Corinne, we're doing all right with the sound now, we're doing, we get, we, we're getting this down. Okay.
Okay, as long as everybody's on their phone, they're done speaking. Hi, four seven eight Ridge Road Garage, located at four seven eight Ridge Road. Applicants Brian and Debbie Hyatt are requesting area variances to allow a zero-point-three-foot side setback for fifteen feet as required and a fourteen-foot rear setback for fifty feet as required for the construction of a twenty-eight-foot by thirty-four-foot detached two-car garage on a zero-point-three-six acre parcel having SBL number zero seven eight point one five dash one dash three-three located in an R three single-family residential district under section two-two-five dash eleven B five sub B and section two-two-five dash eleven B sub five sub C of the code of the Town of Webster.
Okay, thank you. Could you state your name and address and speak in the microphone, and, yeah. You could, you could pull that toward you a little bit, yeah, thank you.
Four seven eight Ridge Road, Webster, New York, one four five eight oh.
Okay, if you could tell us, well, what you intend to do?
Uh, we intend to take the garage down that was built late in nineteen forty-five, we discovered. Um, and replace it with a pole barn, um, two feet wider and ten feet longer. And we're also gonna get rid of the shed in the backyard, that's why the ten feet on the back of the garage to hold equipment.
Okay, now, when I visited the property, it looks like you have a fence on the church property and the driveway?
Uh, yep, that was all there when we moved in, um. I know that we had written paperwork signed by us and them, but I can't seem to put my hands on it from when we moved in. Um, and so I've ordered from the county clerk paperwork to tell us the setbacks and all that stuff, or whatever they have. And, um, they couldn't email it to me or anything, so I had to e- I had to mail something to them with a self-adjust stamped envelope, so they could get it back to me. And I just did that last night.
Okay. Okay, the "them" you were referring to?
Monroe County Clerk.
No, no, you said that there was a signed agreement between us and them or something?
It was between, it was, I, I remember when we moved back in nineteen eighty-four, I remember having the discussion that everything was sitting on the church's line.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember that we signed something and, and the church signed something stating that everybody knew this. Because it was all built before we moved there.
Well, we have a few issues here. Typically, we like some room around a building to maintain a building without going on the neighbor's property. Um, and the codes have changed significantly, but the code has never allowed a turnaround on the neighbor's property. Um, and a fence on the neighbor's property, so. Ideally, if you're going to demolish that garage and build a new one, it would be nice to correct, make some corrections and make it, I mean. Typically, you need a fifteen-foot side setback, but you need at least enough room to set up a ladder and paint the side of the building and so on and so forth. The church, St. Rita's been there as long as I, I can remember, but someday they may, they may sell that property, you don't know. Hopefully, they won't, I like St. Rita's, but.
Everything has been there.
Yeah.
And we didn't put any of this up, it was all there before we moved there.
Yeah.
And upon research, the garage was built sometime in the nineteen forties, and that was before St. Rita's was even there. We, we have not put anything up, no fence, no pull-off, it was all there.
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, but it may be an opportunity for us to fix some things, so that it doesn't cause you problems in the future. Um, I, I have a letter from, uh, the pastor, Father Tim, pastor at St. Rita's, and I have to make, I'd like to make, and I, I, I need to make this, uh, part of the record. But, um, what it comes down to, um, well, should I read the whole letter, John?
Okay, it's, I, I've got, that's kind of a lengthy letter, I mean, there's nothing wrong with summarizing it if you want to, uh, support their.
Yeah, what I, what I could do is summarize, uh, and, and, um, he basically summarized to say, "I met with the Hyatts last week, they expressed a desire to put a new garage on the property line, they talked of how even a three-foot setback would cause their new garage not to line up with the driveway." But what it comes down to is that, um, Father Tim said, "While I wanna be a good neighbor, the diocese and I also think regulations and codes are created for a reason and based on previous experiences. There may be very good reason for adhering to them. I would be in favor of insisting on the regulations or a compromise is necessary, insist that at least an eight-foot setback, eight feet in my estimation, would enable builders and future maintenance workers to not work on our property. A liability issue, not a trespass issue." It's a legitimate concern, because if someone's working on your building, they fall off a ladder, they fall on church property, you're not responsible, church is.
Well, I talked to her.
So, it's, it's, it's a legitimate concern on, on the part of the, uh, the diocese. Um, so I, I wanna make, I'll make this, uh, letter Exhibit A and I'll make this, uh, part of the record, okay? So, I guess what we'll do is, um, we'll, uh, we'll pull the board and get opinions from them as well. Um, let's, uh, let's start with Eric.
Um, how tall is the new building going to be?
Ten, ten-point-six, ten foot six.
To the eaves or to the peak?
To, I'm not exactly sure, I, I'm assuming to the peak.
Yeah, but, uh.
I, I gave the new drawings with the specifications on them. I sent them to Josh and he was gonna pass them out because the gentleman's CAD program was broken.
You checked, you checked the height of requirements, uh, in the code book?
Oh, well, the code, yeah.
Yeah, the proposed height of the garage, excuse me, is, uh, the, the doors are ten feet, not, not the peak.
Oh, okay.
The total height. Um, the drawings that we have in front of us don't have the total height of the garage, but the pitch of the roof appears to be low, so I believe, uh, we would have to get that information from, from the builder.
Well, yeah, now, my point was more to the idea of how much ladder space do you need in order to have the ladder set up properly and still not have the foot of the ladder on the church property, because that, that's where it starts to become an issue, is as soon as any worker has to go onto the church property, if they are injured on church property, it's, or, or anybody else's property, it doesn't even have, yes, then then that falls on them, um.
I did speak to our contractor, they are fully insured, so if anybody got hurt, that's what he's telling me.
The law does not stop any lawsuits, you always have the right to a civil action, so somebody could say, "Well, it was muddy over there, that's because of bad drainage," and so therefore, so they go after the deep pockets. The insurance company could do that, whether your contractor, uh, wanted them to or not. So, it's, it's not, that won't help, unfortunately. We have to keep whatever's going on off the church property at this point.
We've actually, uh, I'm sorry, are you?
Yeah, I'm done for now.
We actually had a similar, not, not the same, but a similar situation where a garage backed up on Ridge Road, the church property. And we denied the variance because it was right on the line, and you had too many buildings anyways, but he was looking for a variance for another accessory structure, and it was right up against the fence on the church property. And we got the same, um, actually, it was the prior pastor, the same reaction, he, he preferred that it met the code because he said, uh, people on his property working on the back of the building, and, uh, he was concerned, a legitimate concern. So, um, I, I think, uh, what I'll do is, uh, uh, Don, how is, uh, do you have, uh, do you have some comments on this?
Well, uh, the time to correct this is at the present time, um, it's, it's, it's extremely close to the eastern property line. And, uh, I, I certainly like to have a, a maintenance space between the eastern property line and the structure. Now, Josh indicated the garage doors are ten feet high, the drawing submitted with the packet, uh, if that's, is, is that correct, or is that incorrect?
No, it is, uh, it's nine foot high, ten foot high.
Yeah, the drawing I have shows nine on the door and ten to the eve.
Yeah. The, the drawing is correct.
Eight foot six to the eve, actually, ten foot six.
Okay, so, so we're talking, uh, really stopping twenty feet in total height to the peak?
Yeah, sounds about right. Yeah.
And it's, it's certainly going to be viewed from, uh, pretty much a one-eighty, uh, uh, on that property because of adjacent to the driveway to the church. Uh, no, my concern is the maintenance, uh, I always like to correct, uh, things, uh, that should be corrected when we have the, uh, ability to correct them, and, uh, at the present time, we do have the ability to track them.
Yeah. All right, Don, thank you, Corinne?
I have to agree with Don, um, the, the building, while it, it is currently very close to the property line and I don't know, you know, what the conditions were when it was built, um, there is no way to maintain that side of the building at a, a basically four-inch setback from the lot line, so, um, it, it, the setback, at least to the side, would need to be corrected to some degree with, with the construction of the new garage. The, the rear setback doesn't really concern me as much, it's a shallow backyard, um, no matter what happens with that structure, short of attaching it to the house, it's going to require a rear setback variance, and that doesn't impact really anything, but the side setback I do have, I do have concern with just from the maintenance and the liability issues.
Thank you, Robert?
Yeah, without repeating, uh, everything that we just said, uh, I agree with, uh, Don and Corinne.
Okay, thank you. I, um, it's generally been this board's position, as long as I've been on the board, whenever somebody wants to change something, just because it was that way doesn't make it right, because it was built so many years ago. And we, we look at, uh, look at this as more of an opportunity to right a wrong. Now, from what I, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm hearing from the board is that they'd like to see some side setback, not, not necessarily fifteen feet, which the code requires, but we need some side setback to, uh, to protect your neighbor from liability and put ladders and equipment around the building to work on it. So, um, and I, I tend to agree with Corinne when she said, "I'm not quite so concerned with the rear setback." So the board's willing to make some concession, but we have an opportunity to fix something and, uh, you know, and, and get it away from that property line. Um, if you want to, I, I, we're hitting you with a lot of information here at one time. If you want a table, go back and go back to the drawing board, talk to your contractor and see if you can make the building a little smaller or move it over without a problem, uh, that might be the way to go. I don't know if you're willing to commit to larger setbacks here on the spot tonight.
Yeah, I, I, I really couldn't do eight feet because it would be in my backyard.
Well, does the building need to be as big as you're proposing? Could you shrink the building a little bit?
Um, it's, what, two feet, two feet wider?
Yeah, well, again, I'm putting you on the spot. What I would suggest, because it's a big investment on your part, and it's a big move, and, um, the board won't approve the setback that you, that you're asking for, it's not gonna happen. So, why don't you go back and talk to the contractor and talk, you know, talk it over, think it over, and maybe come back with a proposal showing us some substantial setback on that side? And you could table and come into the next meeting, if you like, with new drawings and so on.
Okay, um, now, the planning board had mentioned something about a three-foot on that side, is what they had said.
Well, yeah, we, we deal with, we deal with setbacks and the planning board deals, deals with structure and so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, that's, when, when you get a ladder that's going up to a ten-foot eve, um, you're, you need to have more than three foot out from the base. So you're going to end up back on the property, on your neighbor's property again, so from a liability point of view, five foot's probably the absolute minimum given the size of the structure, I mean, another thing to consider is to make the structure narrower, but deeper. I don't know how well that would work with what you want to put in there, I know our pole barn, we've got the main doors up front, and then we've got a smaller garage door.
Yeah, that was the plan.
Yeah, so, you know, you can do something like that and make it lo- longer and more narrow to help achieve the setback without bringing it into your backyard so much, because the rear setback, as Mrs. Wallow pointed out, you know, we've got some latitude there because you've got fourteen feet. Um, you know, you could, you could trade off there, is what I'd suggest.
Yeah. Yeah, I.
Is that what you're attempting to say?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think this board's opposed to your project, but I think, I think, uh, you know, after we read this letter, well, we, we knew it anyways, but, uh, uh, the pastor wrote this letter and he's the one that, he's the one that affects, it's his property next to you. So, uh, to Eric's point, you could change the shape of that garage to get the square footage you want, we're not opposed to the garage, we're not opposed to your project, but we'd like to make a correction on that side setback. So if you could go back to the drawing board and maybe, you know, come back next meeting with, uh, another proposal with, uh, you don't have to pay any more fees or anything, just, you know, come in with, with a, with a new drawing.
Uh, one question, though, so if we do the, uh, different sized building, are they still gonna try to make me move my chain link fence to? I mean, that was there as well, and, and that'd be a hu- huge, huge cost.
Um, yeah.
As far as my map shows, it's just the back corner of the chain link fence that's over.
Yeah, so, well, that, that's really, um.
And that would?
We, we, you know, we don't really have jurisdiction over, I mean, we could condition our variance, but, um, even to, even to take that fence down, you need permission from the church to go onto a property to do that.
Right, and, and Mr. Chairman, th- this is, uh, John DiMarco, Town Attorney, and, and I, I just think to the applicant with Hyatt, you know, this jurisdiction issue is an important one, because for, for this board to approve this, you know, we're giving implicit permission for you to go onto the St. Rita's property to maintain that garage, and we simply don't have the authority to direct, uh, to give authorization to go onto the St. Rita's property.
Correct, correct.
Now, you can certainly try to work out something with St. Rita's relative to some type of a, a easement, a maintenance easement. Uh, but that's something that's gonna have to be with their consent and then filed at the clerk's office, so that it's, it's in the land description. And that would probably be limited just for the purposes of maintenance. But, but clearly, we don't have the authority to make that imposition upon St. Rita's.
Right, you understand? This board has no authority over what you could do on St. Rita's property, it's between you and the diocese, okay? Um, but we have authority over setbacks and we see an opportunity to correct something, so, um, if you wish, uh, we could table this until the next meeting, so you can come back with a.
Yeah, hopefully, I can get my pieces of paper and.
Yeah, okay.
See where we are after that.
So, just tell me you'd like to table till next meeting?
I'd like to table it till next meeting.
Okay. Um, I'll call.
And, and, and Mr. Chairman, you might want to suggest to the applicant that as, as well-intended as Father Tim is, it probably would be much more productive for her to go right to the diocese office and speak to counsel. for her to go right to the diocese's office and speak to counsel who's gonna understand and frame the issues that, you know, we can then go to the, to the bishop's office or whomever to, you know, make other arrangements.
Okay, with respect to the fence, the driveway and all and so on, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, who was I supposed to talk to?
Well, he's saying go to the diocese's office and talk to, the diocese has their own counsel, it's, you know, legal, legal representation.
It's not on the Saint Rita's site, right? It's somewhere else?
Yeah.
Yes, the cathedral, uh.
Sacred Heart, yeah, Sacred Heart Cathedral.
Over near where, um, Lake Road and Ridge Road come together.
If you, if you talk to the, uh, Saint Rita's, uh, admin, her name is Karen.
Yeah.
Um, she could put you in touch with the right people.
Okay.
We could work on the setback, but everything else has to be dealt with, with the diocese, right?
Okay.
So, the applicant's ma- made a request to table till the next meeting, um, I'll call, roll, gun, arrow.
Aye.
All right, Don? Don, you there?
What do you mean?
Yeah, we're just, we're just.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, I, I, uh, the applicant, uh, made a request to table all in favor and I'm just calling roll. Don?
Oh, oh, okay, um, I, I'd like to table it, uh, with the condition that, uh, the applicant, uh, resolved the fence issue and the garage issue upon their return.
Okay, did you hear that? That's reasonable. All right, it's a good idea too, Don, appreciate it. Corinne?
Aye.
Okay, Robert?
Can we give a suggested setback though for the applicant before we send Mrs. Hyatt away?
Well, I'd like to see.
Oh, you continue the wall first, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking eight feet to put a ladder up against that wall and not be under a property.
You said you looked at my property?
Pardon me?
I said you looked at my property, you were there.
Yes. It's a tight lot, we, we're not disputing that. You, you have issues there, but I think maybe if you change the shape of the garage somewhat, maybe it'll, it'll help. You gotta put it on paper though. Okay. All right, so, um, Robert, did you, uh, say aye?
I didn't yet, but aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I lost my train.
And I don't like, I don't like Father Don because he takes all my thunder.
Okay, so, we're gonna table you, uh, the condition is go to the diocese, try and resolve the issues with them, maybe, maybe you could bring back something and write into us and then, uh, try and reconfigure things so you can get some reasonable setback on that side. Again, I don't think the board's too concerned about the rear because you have room to work around the rear of the building, all right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Corinne, would you like to read the next scheduled item, please?
Yes, six two six Pine Lakes Trail Shed located at six twenty-six Pine Lakes Trail. Applicant Elaine Johnson is requesting area variances to allow a five foot side setback where fifteen feet is required and a five foot rear setback where fifteen feet is required for the construction of a one hundred ninety-two square foot, square foot utility shed on a point five-two acre site, giving SBL number zero five six point zero two dash zero two dash four seven located in an Artry single family residential district under section two two five dash forty-eight of the town code of Webster.
All right, could you state your name and address, please, and just tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure. Hi, Elaine Johnson, six two six Pine Lakes Trail in Webster, New York, and I'm, um, putting a shed up and I'm asking for a request for variance to put it five foot from the property line on the northeast corner.
Okay. Another shed application in that neighborhood.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't hear anything that you just said it. All I heard was, uh, papers rattling.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, Elaine Johnson.
Thank you.
Oh, Elaine Johnson, sixty-six Pine Lakes Trail, and I'm requesting to put a shed, um, on the northeast corner, requesting a five foot variance from the property line.
Okay, um, we, we've, uh, we've seen quite a few of these in this neighborhood. Um, these lots are, it's cluster development, so they're tiny lots. And I think five feet has been pretty much what we've settled on is the minimum that we, that we'd accept. Um, maybe I'll just run through and have everybody comment on that. Well, we'll start, Don?
I'll let, uh, Mr. Knowles take the roll first.
I was waiting for that.
I gotta mix it up a little bit.
Well played, Don, well played. Well, uh, you asked me that we've created, uh, various requests for sheds with five foot setbacks, uh, I don't necessarily see a, uh, uh, a reason to vary from that at this point in time, that, uh, the various requests, uh, seems compliant with what we've done, uh, in other parts of the neighborhood.
Okay. Corinne?
I was trying to recall, we have done, I think, a shed variance at six fifteen and six seventeen, just across the street and up the curb a little bit. Um, and I, I know that we had agreed that a five foot rear setback was acceptable since, um, the houses all back up to, uh, Meadow area, um, but I thought that we had looked at a side setback of seven feet since that seemed to be the average setback of the houses, but I, I can't quote it. I don't have an issue with five, I just wanna make sure that we don't, um, don't go any closer than we have with the other properties in the area, because we did kinda set a standard.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, I think we did make it seven on a couple, I think seven, I think seven's the minimum side setback there, I'm pretty sure.
Five feet, which is a total of fifteen between structures.
Okay, so they, they.
Basically, they're splitting the difference.
Yeah, you just go halfway.
So, five is the minimum side setback with fifteen as a total.
Correct.
So, okay.
And the adjoining house is, is ten.
Okay, uh, all right, well, that's good to know, of course.
So, seven seems to be what the builder is doing with the footprints of the house.
Well, yeah, any, any builder is not gonna put it right at five in case the mason makes a mistake.
Yeah, we had a few of those.
Not that builders ever make mistakes, but, you know, but.
Never.
Never, never. So, anyways, uh, yeah, to your point, Corinne, the minimum would be five and I wouldn't go any, any less than that, obviously. Uh, some people did go to seven because their house was seven off the line and they lined it up with their house, if I remember a couple of the applications. Um, okay. Uh, Don, do you wanna chime in?
I think we're going on the right path, uh, you know, with the rear setback of five feet, uh, definitely like to have the seven feet, that's where you're not seeing all the sheds as you're traveling down the roadway, trying to minimize that view.
Now, it looks to me that like there are homes behind this lot, it's out of real space.
No, there's not. I, I have open space behind me.
There's open space behind it?
That's dedicated.
Yes, we, we pay homeowners, uh-huh.
Well, it makes it, I, I can't tell from the map, uh, if there were subdivided lots back there, so there is an o- a, a belt of open space.
Green space, yeah.
So, that, okay, that helps you with the five foot rear setback then, okay. All right, well, um, Robert, you wanna go through the, uh, standards? I like this, I could just call on people.
Yeah.
I'm like the teacher.
Especially since he wanted to get his two cents in.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want you to think I'm neglecting you, Bob, go ahead.
No, I, I, thank you, thanks, guys. Let me, uh, check to see my papers there.
Diately, though, we don't look Catherine.
I got it here somewhere.
That's all, I'll tell you what, I'll tell, I'll tell you what, I'll tell, I'm gonna call you on the next one, let, let's let Corinne do this one. We'll get rid of calling you in the next application, Bob. Okay, go ahead, Corinne.
I don't know if I'm on mute or if I'm not on mute. Um, but the request is certainly not of character with the neighborhood. We've had at least half a dozen applications in that area for sheds, um, all closer to the lot line than the fifteen feet that the code requires. Um, the backyards are certainly short and also narrow, um, so complying with the fifteen foot setback doesn't put the, um, the sheds smack dab in the center of the yard, and there's not a detriment created to nearby properties, um, as it is fairly consistent in that area and, um, the, the house next door, actually, their backyard faces this house, so it's not even so much in, in a side yard like it is typically. Um, not achievable by any other method, I mean, it, it could be moved in, but a shed needs to go behind the house and it's certainly behind the footprint of the house. Um, the request is substantial from the point of view of shed setback, but it does comply with the house setback for the cluster subdivision, so, um, in that case, I would call it not substantial, um, as a total request, no adverse environmental or physical impacts to the site or the neighborhood. Um, the difficulty, I'm gonna say it's self-created in that, you know, a shed is not a, a absolute requirement, but I understand that, you know, we need to put our lawn stuff away and it certainly does meeten up the property, um, so with that, if I can sign my paper, um, oh, do we need to do seeker, I'm sorry, before I do anything with a motion?
Yeah, okay.
Anything anybody has to add?
Excellent, no, no, actually, it's covered, anybody else? Everybody, okay. Okay, um, pursuant to section six seventeen point five of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker.
Second.
Okay, okay, Don?
Aye.
Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Just, just, okay, just to let you know, I have everybody's knee written in a row, that's why I'm not very imaginative, I just read it. I like it better when you're sitting up here with me, honestly. Okay, we have that, uh, Corinne, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, can we do public comment?
Thank you, thank you. Um, this meeting's open to the public and you could reach us by telephone at eight seven two seven zero one one, anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. We'll give them a minute.
Okay, and then I can start?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll start the motion and then if the phone rings, then I'll start talking.
Aye.
Okay.
I, I, I would go ahead.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I would make a request to grant an area variance, make, I'm sorry, make a motion to grant an area variance for a shed at six two six Pine Lakes Trail for the applicant Elaine Johnson to allow a five foot side setback and a five foot rear setback in both conditions where fifteen feet is required for a one hundred ninety-two square foot utility shed on a point five-two acre parcel, um, located at six two six Pine Lakes Trail and per the survey map that was provided with the application.
I'll second that. Okay.
Just to verify, I've got a, an instrument survey of the property. Which corner are you putting the shed in?
The northeast.
Okay, thank you.
What was, what was the concern now, Jeff?
Nah, I just, which, which corner the shed is gonna go into.
Okay, let's make that part of the motion, per, per the survey map in the northeast part of the lot. Okay, okay, very good. Okay, Don?
I'm ended.
I'm ended, thank you.
Um, are we dealing with a seven foot setback to the side?
We did the side and rear.
We're doing five because the house is five.
Okay, aye.
Okay, yeah, Eric?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Okay, Corinne made the motion, I'll, I'll, I'll say aye as well. So, motion's passed, um, you have your variance, um, hopefully there's lot stakes there.
Yes, there is.
Hopefully, you're supposed to put stakes to the corners now, it's, it's actually the law, so make sure you're at least five feet off the line. Uh, couple of conditions, uh, you need one year of meaningful construction, you have one year to start, and you need a building permit, all right? Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Good luck. Okay.
Applicant Nancy Van Oersdahl is requesting an area variance to allow a ten foot side setback where fifteen feet is required and for a nine point five foot rear setback where fifteen feet is required for the placement of a twelve foot by fourteen foot utility shed atop an existing concrete pad in the backyard of a zero point four-one acre parcel given SBL number zero six five point zero five dash one dash seven zero located in an Artry single family residential district under section two two five dash four eight of the code of the town of Webster.
All right, could you, uh, state your name and address and tell us about your project?
Yes, Nancy Van Oersdahl, eleven sixty-two Appian Drive in Webster. My project is basically getting a shed put on a pre-existing concrete slab that we found when we moved there. We do wanna make the shed a little bit bigger than the slab, which means we would go into our own private, from the neighbors.
Eric, can you ever speak up? I can't hear her. They're having trouble hearing, maybe, okay, if you could just speak up a little bit, please, thank you.
Okay. Yes, so I'm, I'm trying to, uh, put a shed on an existing, uh, concrete slab that's, we just want the shed a little bit bigger than the slab is, which we would go into our own mar- yard away from the neighbors for that, and I think it's, was measured a nine and a half foot setback on the side of one neighbor and in the back to the fence.
Okay. Okay, um, the shed, you say you're gonna make it larger, so you're gonna make it larger away from the property lines?
Right, exactly, we'd go into our own, uh, side, and I don't know what size shed yet until my pocketbook tells me, but, uh, we'll decide that later.
Um, I visited the site and the backyard is quite narrow, it's like seventy feet along the rear line. The concrete slab looks like it's been there for twenty years.
Yeah.
Um, there used to be anchor bolts in it, so there used to be a shed there, the anchor bolts are cut off. I looked around and every neighbor has a shed two darned close to the lot line.
Yes.
All around in your backyard.
Four of them.
All these backyards kinda converge because you're like on the inside curve of the road.
Yes.
That's why your lot's so narrow in the back is you're on the inside curve. Um, so, it's, it's, um, I mean, it makes sense to put a shed on that slab, the slab is in perfect condition.
Right, it's perfect.
But even that's old, yeah, okay. All right, um, I'll, I'll ask the members, uh, for, for their opinions as well. Robert?
Uh, you asked a question about the slab being there, I was curious if there was a slab, if there was a shed on it, uh, in the past, did they take it down or?
So, my answer is when we bought the house, there were loads of thirty to forty foot high tall pines that we removed in twenty-seven, and I'm not exaggerating, were removed and we sorta discovered the slab, um, in the removal process, and it's been sitting there kinda open, we've been using it to put chairs on for the last, say, three years, and could use a shed there, I'm a gardener, so I'd kinda like to put my stuff in that area. So, it's been there for, I mean, we've been there five years, so my honest answer is I don't know, but it looks like it's been there a long time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Corinne?
Um, the, the lot itself is, um, narrow, it's that part of the backyard and it's also a fairly short backyard, um, because it's where all the properties come together. That's the logical location for it and, um, obviously someone else had thought that at the time since it looked like there had been a shed there at one point in time. Um, I know we've had other applications along that. Um, I know we've had other applications along that part of the, the shorter backyard area for sheds in the past for the very same reasons. Um, I, I don't, it, the, the slab's there and it's in good condition, as long as you don't go any closer to the lot line than the slab is, I don't see it, it being a contentious issue.
Yeah. Eric, Eric is, uh, is, is mouthing words to me, but he's got, he's got a mask on, so I can't see his mouth. Anyways, okay, Don?
I, I would agree with Corinne, um, you know, that slab is very, uh, you're right, it's probably been there for twenty, minimum twenty years.
Yeah.
Uh, I walked that site today, I really don't see any issue with, uh, what they're proposing. It's, uh, it's a minimal setback to the side, uh, and the rear, uh, no, no issues at all.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree that, that slab's been there for a while and, um, you know, if there were pine trees there at one point, that shed, old shed probably just rotted away from being in the damp all the time, so there's no point in, you may as well reuse it, and it's certainly within, you know, it's not even, we've given away five foot variances, so this is not bad at all.
Yeah, it's nine and a half and ten, where fifteen feet's required, so it's not, not really substantial variance. Um, this, uh, meeting's open to the public. If you'd like to comment, our telephone number is eight seven two seven zero one one to speak for or against this application. While, while we're waiting to see if the phone's gonna ring, I will make a motion, uh, pursuant to section six seventeen point five, the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker.
Second.
Eric, seconds, okay. Don?
Aye.
Okay, Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
I don't think anybody's gonna call in.
Don't.
Yeah, not for this one, okay. Um, let's see. Don, you wanna make a motion on this one?
Okay, I'll try. Uh-huh, uh-huh, I've all set scripts through the standards, are you gonna skip that?
Nope, let's do it.
Hey, Robert, take it, Bob.
Take it away.
Well, as everybody says, this, this slab has been there forever, uh, I don't think that the request is out of character with the neighborhood. There's several sheds, um, in and around that, that piece of the rock, um, the pre-existing slab, so, uh, I don't actually think that it's out of character, uh, for nearby properties. When we sent it to our other sheds, the benefit is, is achievable by any other methods. Uh, I think usually this, the existing slab is the smart way to go, and, uh, the nine and a half foot and the ten foot setback are less than granted in the past, uh, so it's not substantial. There's no adverse, uh, physical conditions or impact to the, to the neighborhood, uh, difficulty's not, uh, self, uh, self-created. Uh, we live in west New York, it's snowing three times in May, uh, you ought to have someplace to put your gardening and, uh, lawn mowers and everything to do with. Um, so, um, so what can we, to make a motion?
Yep, please do.
All right. I will make a motion. What am I hearing? Something's going on. Um, for an area variance to allow a ten foot side setback where fifteen feet is required and a nine and a half foot rear setback where fifteen feet is required, uh, for the placement of a twelve by fourteen utility shed atop of an existing concrete pad in the back end of a point four-one acre parcel giving SBL number zero six five point zero five dash one dash seven zero located in an R three single-family residential district under section two two five dash four eight of the code of, of town of Webster, uh, for applicant Nancy Van, Van Oersdale.
Yeah, no, no worries.
No, I won.
I'll second that. Okay, uh, Don?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Corinne?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And of course, aye, Barry, aye, okay. All right, you have your variance, um-
Great, thank you.
-one year meaningful construction and, uh, you'll need a building permit, even though slab's there, you still need a building permit.
Right, right, I'll do that, thanks. And thank you all for accommodating all of us, you know, with all this situation going on, we appreciate it.
We're doing our best.
You did a lot of, well, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to number six. Corinne, if you could read that into the record, please?
All right, now can you hear me?
Number six.
I lost what I was on mute or not. Okay, five forty-six Holt Road Accessory Apartment Edition, located at five forty-six Holt Road, applicant Nicholas and Kimberly Avery are requesting an area variance to allow a forty-two foot front setback where sixty feet is required for the construction of a sixteen point five by forty-five foot accessory apartment addition to a single-family residence on a five point two-six acre parcel giving SBL number zero six four point zero eight dash three dash six five point one located in an R two single-family residential district under section two two five dash ten B sub six sub A and two two five dash four nine point one of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay, thank you. So, state your name and address and tell us about your project, please?
Kimberly Avery, five four six Holt Road, Webster, one four five eight oh. We would like to build an accessory apartment onto the north side of our home so that we can move my mom over with us. She currently lives in a, uh, um, razor ranch and mobility issues, we'd like to get it on one level.
Excuse me, excuse me, what? Somebody's not muted and it's creating some static here in the room, so we can't hear. Okay, all right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, so we'd like to just build the accessory apartment so that she'll be on one level and closer to us so that we can help, she can take care of herself, but just to have her closer to us in case there's any issues.
Okay.
Um, what we have is, our home has three front elevations to it. We'd like to add on to the farthest back point, but it is still too close to the, um, the road based on the requirements. So, we're asking for a variance of, I think it's about sixteen feet. That would allow us to build from that furthest back point of the front of the house to put the addition on. The side and the back, we have more than enough space.
Okay, this is refreshing. We, uh, this applicant was in here a few months ago looking to put a, a modular home on the lot, on, on your lot.
Yes.
To the, to the south of your home.
Yes.
And the board suggested add it on to the house because the town code doesn't allow for two structures, two homes on one lot.
Right.
And she actually did what we suggested.
Whoa. I gotta hold against it.
It's a good night. Okay.
All right, twenty points, right? Of course.
Now, frankly, the only reason the applicant is here is because to attach it to that house, it winds up in the front setback because that house was probably built a hundred and fifty years ago.
The original portion is over two hundred years old, yes.
Two hundred years old?
Yes.
Really? Oh, wow. So, um, what happens is even though she's pushed it back as far as she could to attach to the house, it's still within today's front setback of sixty feet. So, they're looking at forty-two feet, which is still back further from the front of the house, which is at twenty-four point, looks like point nine, it's a little, little messed up. So, um, it's actually, uh, they've done their best to keep it away from the road as possible and still attach it to the house. So, uh, do you have any comment, Eric?
No, you can't do any better than that under the circumstances.
Yeah, that, that, that's pretty much my opinion. What's, uh, Robert, you have an opinion on this?
No, it's actually refreshing that she took our comments and actually, uh, utilized them and attached it, uh, the addition. I, I don't have anything, uh, anything to add to it. I think she did a good job.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, Corinne?
I can't add anything to it. Thank you for doing exactly what we asked, that, that's the logical place for it, um, and it is the furthest most part of the home, so you can't do any better than that, thank you very much.
Don, you have anything to add? Don, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
Yes, uh, I agree with, uh, my two other colleagues, uh, and I could congratulate the applicant for, uh, trying to, uh, meet our standards and try to minimize, uh, the need for variances, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah. Now, uh, you mentioned something about having a, a separate electric meter?
Yes, um, we're scheduled for the planning board next week.
That, that's the planning board's decision, not ours.
Right.
While we're dealing with the setback.
But I didn't realize that at the time that I did the original application, so I've done a separate one and we're on the agenda for next week.
Uh, but, you know, that's, I, I talked to Argina, they will allow two meters on a house, but that's between you and the planning board.
Okay.
Um, this meeting is open to the public, uh, our phone number here is eight seven two seven zero one one. If anyone wishes to speak for or against this application, please call in now. And while we're waiting for that phone to ring, we'll do our seeker. Okay, uh, pursuant to section six seventeen point five, NCR six seventeen point five, environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two seeker.
Second.
Seconded, okay. Don?
Aye.
Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Okay. I don't think we're gonna get any calls of, actually, we didn't have any, any neighbors come out and speak for or against us in the last, in the last proposal, that was a more substantial proposal, so, um, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Um, let's see, uh, Corinne, you wanna go through the, uh, go through the standards, please?
Uh-huh, sure. The request, I'll, I'll say it's not out of character with the neighborhood, it's certainly not out of character with this parcel. Um, that area is kind of a mishmash of older homes and newer homes, um, and it's attaching to the furthest from the road or furthest from the, the front setback line portion of the house, so it's, it's the best case condition. Um, it will not create a detriment to nearby properties. We don't have any of the neighbors giving any adverse feedback and the neighboring properties are significantly far enough away that they won't notice it. Um, the benefit is not achievable by any other method. Um, we did ask the applicant to, um, look at this particular method of getting the accessory apartment for their parents, um, since their previous request was not feasible or not, um, doable within the town code. Um, the request is not substantial, it's not coming any further into the setback than the balance of the house. Um, the difficulty is not self-created, the house has been there for over two hundred years, so the front setback was established before Holt Road was a paved road. Um, anything anybody else would like to add to that?
No, you covered it, excellent.
All right, then I will jump right into making a motion. I would like to make a motion to grant an area variance for an accessory apartment addition at five forty-six Holt Road and that home owned by Nicholas and Kimberly Avery to allow a forty-two front setback where sixty feet is required for the construction of a sixteen point five by forty-five foot accessory apartment addition to the north side of the home. Um, and I don't know that there's anything else that needs to be added to that. There is no side setback requirement, it's just a forty-two foot front setback.
Yeah, right.
And that setback will, or the accessory structure will, um, be a forty-five foot long addition and sixteen point five feet wide.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, Don?
Aye.
Uh, Jack, uh, I'm sorry, Robert?
Aye.
Okay. Corinne?
Aye.
And, uh, Barry, aye. Okay. Uh, you have your variance, you gotta go to the planning board yet, okay? Um, the variance is good for one year meaningful construction, okay? You need a building permit, obviously, after you get through the planning board, and, uh, good luck with the project.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Application number seven.
Yep.
Seven thirty-one Ridge Road Edition, located at seven thirty-one Ridge Road, applicant David Walderek is requesting area variances associated with the construction of an addition to an existing single-family residence, along with two attached car garages on a point two seven acre parcel located in an MC medium intensity commercial district to allow the following. A, a four point five foot side setback to the east where twenty feet is required under section two two five dash seventeen B sub five sub B of the code of the town of Webster. B, a twelve foot side setback to the west where twenty feet is required under section two two five dash seventeen B sub five sub B of the code of the town of Webster. C, total lot coverage of twenty-two point eight percent where a maximum of twenty percent is required under section two two five dash seventeen B sub two of the code of the town of Webster.
Okay, can you state your name and address, please, and, uh, tell us about the project?
Uh, my name is David Walderek, I'm an architect and I'm representing Terry Nesbit. Um, what we're looking to do is, um, we're asking for relief on the two side setbacks and the lot overage.
It's only a chance to mark like I cannot hear the applicant at all.
Okay, could you speak up there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're having trouble here. That's the biggest issue with the remote, remote medias is, uh-
Can you hear me?
-able to hear everybody, yeah.
Okay, um, we're looking for relief on both side setbacks, the front set, the front setback and the rear setback, we're within those confines, but the side setback on the west side, we're looking for relief of eight feet, uh, where twenty is required. Uh, we, we are planning to build up to the twelve foot mark. And on the, um, on the east side, uh, we're looking for relief, um, of fifteen feet. Um, there is an existing structure on the site that is already, uh, four point eight feet off of that site, that side setback, uh, or side property line. And so, we're, um, hoping to, uh, build within the five foot, uh, proposed setback uh, where twenty foot is required. And we're also looking for, uh, two point eight percent, um, overage on the site coverage where twenty percent is required, we're at twenty-two point eight. What we're doing is, um, the property is owned, uh, the owner, uh, is, uh, Terry Nesbit, and she, uh, has a, an existing Cape Cod, small Cape Cod on the, on the property right now, along with a, with a garage. And she wants, and it is presently being rented, and she would like to, uh, develop the property for her permanent residence. So, what she's doing is, uh, building a garage in the front that would face Ridge Road. It's a three-car garage and it would be attached to the existing Cape Cod that's there, which is very small, it's a twenty by twenty. And then she would like to build an addition onto that Cape Cod and then, uh, add a, a small, uh, garage bay on the back, which would be for, you know, garden tools and things like that. So, um, so all in all, the, the overall structure is requiring a slight overage in the, the coverage.
So, this is going to be a residence?
Yes.
Not, not a business?
Okay. Right, it's a residence. The, the combined, uh, existing Cape Cod and the new addition come to about twelve hundred fifty square feet, so it's not, it's not really all that big.
It is a narrow lot.
Yeah.
Very narrow.
Yeah.
Now, there's a, uh, there's a concrete block retaining wall, is that owned by your client or the neighbor to the west?
I think it's, uh, the neighbor owns it.
Let's see, I- Let's see, the driveways, how far from, it looks like the driveway is close to the line. Is that in here also? I don't see a driveway variance as well.
This driveway was done long before the five-foot requirement was in place.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that, but I'm just wondering if it should be for the application.
Conforming, but yeah, I suppose we could advertise it.
Yeah, okay, it's not...
If I may chime in, the five-foot setback for the driveway...
To the property line.
Right, to the property line, is only required in residential districts.
Okay, even though it's a residence in a commercial district?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, well, it's such a narrow lot that you can, it's tough to build anything there without variances, frankly.
The problem I have is, though we're expanding our residential use in a commercial district, it's almost, I mean, you know, it flies right in the face of the master plan and the existing zoning to increase the residential use.
You know, once she spends this kind of money on this property, it's a substantial, substantial amount of work.
Yeah, and if it's sold, it becomes another issue, is, you know, we start to run into an issue of, okay, can you sell it as a residence now?
If she wanted to sell it, she could convert it to, say, an attorney's office or some hairstylist. I mean, there's enough room in the facility. It just happens to be a very small lot.
Could be converted, yeah. The front rear setback or not, the issue is just the sides, because it's such a narrow lot.
Yeah, it's narrow even for what was, what's there that has been converted to businesses.
Well, let's have a discussion. Corinne, if you could, you have an opinion?
It's not, I mean, it's a lot of addition compared to what's there, but it's not an excessive size as far as the home. The house itself would only be allowed to be 10 feet wide, which is not even wide enough to be a bedroom, if the side setbacks were adhered to. I don't know that even you could center it a little bit more to get, you know, to grow the side of the 4.5-foot side setback or not, but, no, it's a tight fit.
Yeah. Bob, how about you?
It's an unusual, um, construction project. The lot is so narrow. I'm looking at the how narrow it actually is. What is it, 15 feet?
15, yeah.
I don't know, considering what you're trying to do there, I don't necessarily know that you have any other options or any other ways to do it. I mean, it could make the addition a little longer and narrower, but I don't know. It's basically the same side setback as what you're proposing for the garage, so I don't really see another way to do it, honestly.
How about you, Don?
I have an issue. This is located in MC district. It requires a total of 20-foot side buffers. We're not listed for that, even though it's a single-family, it's still an MC district, so it should be noticed for that. As far as what's being proposed, I don't see any other options as far as the property could be converted from single-family to a small office commercial. That could be done overnight. Other than that, that's my interest.
Okay. Well, the way I see it, just like people ask why are there so many fast foods? Why are this? Why is that? And it's not up to us to tell the applicant where to invest their money. It's, and if this applicant wants to live in that location, I don't think the variances are out of line with what's there as far as the lot being 50 feet wide. I don't think, I don't think you could do anything with that lot without variances. You just simply can't do it. There is a car lot to the east, and I believe there's a berm right along the side of that car lot, isn't there, with trees on it?
Yes.
Am I not correct?
Yeah.
The land drops off in the rear to the carriage, you know, the carriage townhouse subdivision. The buildings to the west look like they're about five feet off of that lot line, so it's really not inconsistent with what's there. And to Mr. Benway's point, if this someday is not a residence, it could very easily become a professional office of some sort. That's what's happened to the buildings to the west. I believe there's a chiropractor's office and another office of some sort.
Get veterinarian.
Yeah, so, I don't think it's our, I don't think it's our position to tell a person they shouldn't be building that there. Residential is obviously a much lower impact than commercial, so it's not, you're not adding to the load of traffic and so on and so forth. That, you know, that's just, that's just my view. I suspect, you know, 10, 15 years from now, maybe somebody will come in and, you know, and make some sort of commercial space out of that. I don't know, I'm just speculating. This meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to comment for or against this application, our phone number here is 872-7011. We'll give you a minute or two to see if anybody wants to comment on this.
So, while we're waiting, so your logic is expanding the residential use isn't necessarily a problem, even though it's in an MC zone, because it can be converted to an office at a later date?
It could easily become some sort of office space. There are still homes that are occupied all along Ridge Road that, you know, that are, people are happy to be there.
So, they're doing busy for me.
But, you know, there are people that enjoy living there. They like the location. So, I don't think...
I'm not saying don't do it, it's just the extension of the residence, you know.
You have an opinion about a residence in a commercial zone?
It's part of the evolution of the town. I mean, it's not, you can certainly change the use to the more residential. There's no prohibition to make it, to force it to be commercial. It's convenient to the roadway, it's easy on and off, it's the first road that's plowed in the wintertime, so, I mean, there's a lot of pluses to living on a busier street.
For the record, that's Jeff Benway talking. I agree, if somebody wants, it's a residence now, we can't take that away from somebody.
Right, right.
Say, get out of here, you can't live there anymore. It's a residence now, so I don't think that's our position. I think what we need to do is look at the setbacks relative to what's trying to be built. I don't know that you can make anything any narrower and still have it work.
No, no. I agree that there's nothing else you can do, it's just the expansion of the residence, but given the discussion we've just had, I can see where you're going with it.
Yeah, that's happened up and down, up and down Ridge Road, residences have become businesses and vice versa, business back in residences, but...
Really?
Yeah, I owned a property that was a heating company, and when they moved out, I converted back into wells.
Really?
Not far from there, actually, but, and people enjoyed living there, actually. So, I don't think that's a big issue. I don't think anybody's going to call in or comment on this, they've had ample time. Pursuant to section 617.5 of the environmental code, I'd like to make a motion for a type 2 seeker.
Second.
It's easier when Eric seconds, because I can see him, that's the only reason. Okay, Don? Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Okay, seeker's passed. I just want to say something, just for everybody's education. I made a list according to how people sit when they're here.
That's great, that's great.
Corinne?
Robert?
In that order, that's the reason I did that. Nobody's, I'm not trying to favor or not favor.
Sure, sure.
Okay, let's see, let's take a look at the standards here. The first standard is the request is not out of character with the neighborhood. It's a transitional neighborhood. It's definitely leaning toward commercial. There's a car dealer on one side and offices on the other, and so on and so forth, but it's transitional. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did I hear somebody? Okay. So, anyway, there are still some residences on Ridge Road, and if this individual wants to live there, we can't really dissuade her from doing so. There is no detriment created. I know the setbacks are rather significant, smaller than what's required, but as I said before, to the east is a car lot. There's cars parked there. They're not going to bother anybody on that side. The other side is an office and some townhouses, and actually, you know, the offices are open during business hours. I can't imagine that somebody living in this location would disturb them at all. The benefit really is not achievable by any other method. It's a narrow, narrow lot. The size of the buildings proposed are pretty minimal. They're not excessive by any means. There are no adverse environmental physical impacts. They're not adding traffic. If it was commercial, we'd be looking for traffic studies or something, or the planning board would, but they're not adding traffic. Someone's going to quietly live and enjoy their property, even though it's in a commercial district. Difficulty's not self-created, it is what it is. It's just a narrow lot with an old Cape house. That house is probably 80 or 90 years old anyways. The request is somewhat significant, but again, given the width of the lot, there's really no other way to expand that house without, you know, requiring some substantial setback variances. Anybody have anything to add?
Yeah, that covers it.
Okay, so, with that out, make a motion to grant area variances to a property located at 731 Ridge Road, applicant Dave Walderek, for a 2.27-acre parcel located in an MC medium-intensity commercial district to allow the following. A 4.5 side setback to the east where 20 feet is required, under section 225-17B-5B of the Code of the Town of Webster. B, a 12-foot side setback to the west where 20 feet is required, under section 225-17B-5B of the Code of the Town of Webster. And a total lot coverage of 22.8% where a maximum 20% is required, under section 225-17B-2 of the Code of the Town of Webster. I think that'll do it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Anybody have any? Did I forget anything? Okay. All right, we have a second. We'll call roll. Don? Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Okay, Eric?
Hi.
And Barry?
Hi.
You have your variances. Good luck. You have one-year meaningful construction, as you know, and you have to get a building permit to the Town of Webster.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, David. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Are you ready for the last one?
Last one, number eight, Webster Woods Car Wash Use Variance.
Located at 801 Ridge Road, applicant Webster Woods LLC is requesting a use variance to allow for the construction of a car wash business within the Webster Woods Plaza on a 1.24-acre parcel having SPL number 079.17-1-85, located in an MC medium-intensity commercial district, under section 225-17 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Please use the microphone and state your name, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Hang this up for you first.
Oh, excuse me. Put those up on the board, then step up to the microphone, because we have to, we have to hear.
Barry, when was this applicant in before, for this use variance? Do you remember the date?
I don't remember the date. I did review, I did review different, some different minutes that Catherine had sent us, both from the zoning board and the planning board. Maybe the applicant can refresh our memory.
They went all the way back to 2018.
I submitted the application in October of 2018. I believe it was heard initially in January 2018, if my recollection is correct. Again, just to start off, my name is Chris Nadler, general counsel for Mark IV. I ordinarily show up with an engineer or two, or even three, to hang my drawings, but obviously, I'm happy to be here tonight. Thank you all for doing this. I'm glad that the town is able to get applications back in gear, and I think it's, you're volunteering to do it is very beneficial for the community, so thank you. In March 2018, this board, the Webster Zoning Board of Appeals, granted a use variance for the Royal Car Wash at 1145 Ridge Road. Prior to that, Mark IV had been talking to the town board about, excuse me, subsequent to that, Mark IV had been talking to the town board of the Town of Webster about rezoning our parcel at 801 Ridge Road. When we appeared at the town board finally, the town board said, "Why don't you just do what the Royal Car Wash guys did? Get a use variance." So I showed up at the town clerk's office the next day, copied their use variance application.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Everybody check and see if they have their phones on mute, please, because we're getting quite a bit of static here. Okay, I'm sorry.
I copied their use variance application. I told Betsy Brug, the attorney from Woods Ovi who prepared, I said, "I'm plagiarizing this. We've got the exact same situation. I'm going to submit the same use variance application you did." She said, "Makes sense to me. Go ahead, have at it." So that's what I submitted in October 2018 to this board. When I came, I believe it was in January 2019, it seemed like this board was, understood the need for a use variance application, was in favor of granting it, but said, "Get your site plan together first." Thereafter, we spent about a year at the planning board, hammering out the details of this site plan. We significantly reduced the size of the car wash, the proposed car wash at Webster Woods Plaza. We took out a wash lane, we took out a laser wash bay. We turned the building so that the individual bays are facing on the south. We did a traffic impact study that showed that at most three to four Um, we did a traffic impact study, uh, that showed that, uh, at most, three to four cars at peak hours would be added as a result of this. Primarily, what this is going to do is get cars already going down Ridge Road to turn in on their way to Webster Woods Plaza or on their way to, uh, Five Mile Line, uh, road.
Okay, now, excuse me one second. The applicant's holding up a, uh, a rendering of aerial view of the, um, of the proposed car wash. Um, unfortunately, the people at home can't see this, but-
You have a camera?
But, yeah, well, let's, yeah, let's do that. I don't, I don't know if they could, I don't know if the resolution's going to be good enough, but, uh, let's, let's make that exhibit A in this application, okay?
Exhibit A is, uh, the site plan prepared by BME, uh, after extensive discussions with, uh, the planning board. Um, when we met with, uh, essentially a PRC, Mr. Benway, Mr. Caccianni, and a few other members of the planning board, a few months ago, they said, all right, get the use variance and come back to the planning board, and we think we can get you a site plan approval. So what we're here for is a use-
Mr. Chairman, let, can I just interrupt you real quick here?
Go, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so, the aerial view is exhibit B like Baker, um, on the submission that the applicant made, uh, to the zoning board, is, is that right, Mr. Nadler?
Uh, that's changed significantly. I made that submission. Exhibit B, uh, that we submitted is from October two thousand eighteen. After a year of working with the planning board, it's a lot smaller, it's oriented differently, it sits back from the road a little bit more, so it's not the one that you're looking at.
Okay, so that we're clear, this aerial view that you're referencing, uh, is currently not in front of any of the, um, sitting board members, though, offsite this evening, is that accurate?
Yes. I wouldn't know, it's the man who's indicating that.
Well, I'm, uh, I, I can't see that drawing. Uh, so, 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 Mr. Chairman, if you, let's just make sure as we go along, that'll make the record more clean, uh, how many of the board members are unable to view that, because we're, we're not at a webex, we're on, uh, voice line only, so let's just make sure we're clear on that.
Understood, yeah. There's only two board members here in the boardroom and three board members, uh, teleconferencing. So, there's three board members that can't see this drawing, and even if we hold it up to the cam, even if we hold it up to the camera, I don't think the resolution would be good, good enough for them to see any detail.
Okay. And you refer to it now as a drawing, is it an aerial photo or is it a drawing?
It's a, it's a rendering.
It's either a rendering, I would say, is that-
No, this, this is a site plan superimposed on an aerial view.
Okay.
Um, this is an, an actual site plan prepared by an engineer. Oh, I just, it's yellow and green and looks like a drawing, but this is an actual site plan, um, superimposed over an aerial view.
And just for the record, uh, the board members do have a copy of the site plan in their packet, it's just not the colored rendering that is being displayed here in the boardroom.
But it's the same one.
It's essentially the same.
That was my question. We have a drawing number thirteen, this is Corinne, of project number two five five two A, is that showing the same thing that is on the drawing number thirteen?
That is correct.
It appears, yeah, appears like that to me as well, yes.
Okay, we just don't have the pretty colors.
Ours is in color, okay.
It's green and yellow, I wouldn't call that pretty.
Now they know what you're talking about at home.
Yeah, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Good point.
Yeah. Uh, another, uh, change that, uh, that we made through the planning board process is that, after going through the car wash, uh, vehicles can be funneled behind the Webster Woods Plaza building, uh, over to, uh, Five Mile. Uh, I think this will greatly reduce, uh, any traffic problems. Um, and, and we've worked that out with the planning board, that's what the planning board wanted to see, and that's what we've, we've, we've shown on our site plan.
Are they exiting out that way or entering out behind the plaza?
Uh, they, they can exit that way, it's not an entrance.
Okay.
But it's behind the plaza?
Correct.
Okay.
They can exit out, out point. This is the exit, they could either come this way, and back up Ridge Road, or this way, behind the plaza, or through, uh- In terms of use variance standards, first of all, there's precedent for this board granting a use variance for this very, uh, type of project in the same situation, in the same zoning district, um, in the same year that we applied for this. In terms of, uh, reasonable rate of return for any of the permitted uses, I submitted in the initial package an affidavit from our director of commercial real estate, Susan Woods. She's a commercial real estate broker with nineteen years of experience in the industry. She's extensively marketed the property, the pad site that is Webster Woods Plaza Four at eight oh one Ridge Road, and her affidavit shows that nobody wants it. No, there just isn't a market for it at this point. Um, I've submitted an affidavit and financial records from Jim Richards, our chief accountant. He has a well over forty years of experience in the, in accounting and the real estate development industry, and he's attached to his affidavit, uh, the financial records that show that, uh, over two hundred thousand dollars were invested into this property, and well under that, uh, we, we can't make any return on that property, uh, after having invested all that money. And the financial records are attached to that affidavit, um, and that's competent evidence that this board can consider. Um, the alleged hardship is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. This is a pad site that is right on Ridge Road, that is attached to a plaza, uh, that has, that, that is not desired by the marketplace. Um, to my knowledge, there aren't similarly situated, uh, pad sites of this size and shape. Um, it is not a common situation in the medium, intense, medium commercial district. Um, this is the only one. There was one before that's similarly situated, and that's at eleven forty-five Ridge Road, and that's now the Royal Car Wash. The requested variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This is going to be designed to blend in with the plaza, same materials, same color, same design. Uh, the cars and any other outdoor activity will be on the south side away from Ridge Road. Uh, as I told you, vehicle traffic can be directed behind the plaza building, the main plaza building. Uh, the character of the car wash is, obviously, you drive down Ridge Road, you know, is appropriate for Ridge Road. Uh, Webster Federal Credit Union and Tim Hortons are right there in the plaza, they both have drive-through, uh, operations at their facilities. So this is in character with the neighborhood. And finally, the alleged hardship is not self-created. We don't control market conditions. Uh, the, Mark IV bought this property in two thousand four. Uh, it was going to be a great place to put a pad site, would build the plaza buildings first, invested all the money to do the whole site, and by then, the market, the current market conditions, not favorable to this. So just like the Royal Car Wash, we're asking for a use variance, I think we've submitted competent evidence, uh, so that this board can, uh, follow its own precedent and grant a, a use variance. And I'd love to, uh, answer any questions that you have.
Is there a particular order you want to go in? He wants to know what order you want to go in.
Oh, well, you know what I said? Okay, uh, Robert?
Uh, going all the way back to the beginning, it's, I, I, this, this was not the exact same situation as, as where, uh, we asked, uh, a lot of pointed, uh, specific questions. Uh, one of the, one of the, uh, criteria for granting a use variance, if I, if I'm not mistaken, is, is proving hardship. And at the time, uh, we asked the question about whether or not that plaza was, uh, was, uh, was, uh, and it, there was an issue with, with renting space out in that plaza, and, uh, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but at the time, I, I think the, the answer to that question was that that plaza was almost a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent occupied and rented. So the question was asked, if, if they expanded their plaza and used it for what, uh, for what, if, uh, the code permitted, that why wouldn't they be able to rent the property, uh, and expand that plaza and use it, and, and, and continue the, the use the way it was intended to be used, instead of asking for a use permit?
Well, you know, I kind of remember that, and I'll tell you. When I appeared before you the last time, I was, uh, a lawyer in private practice, um, representing Mark IV. Today, I'm in-house counsel for Mark IV, and I can tell you, it's not a hundred percent occupied, it's nowhere near a hundred percent occupied, and it wasn't a year and a half ago when I appeared here. If I said that, I was absolutely mistaken. Um, much of the upper floors are not, are not filled, um, without getting into too much detail, um, expanding it is, is just not a feasible alternative, uh, as a result of construction costs, and we, we won't be able to rent it out. Um, in terms of proving financial hardship, we've submitted, uh, the actual financial proof based on what we allocated towards site purchase costs, site construction costs, uh, and expenses, taxes, insurance, overhead, uh, that we've paid for that property on, since two thousand four. Um, as well as, uh, an affidavit from a professional with nineteen years of experience who says, nobody wants to lease that site for one of the permitted uses in the zoning district. She's tried, she's done everything that a commercial real estate broker can do, and has been unsuccessful. And that is exactly what use variances are designed for.
Uh, Don, how's, uh, Eric here? Um, and, and I think Corinne and, and Barry were on the board at the time. Didn't we at one point grant a use variance for one of the upper offices because they were having trouble renting out the upper floor space?
I don't remember that. I don't believe that.
I don't recall that.
I'm not recalling that at all. Okay.
I, I, I think, um, the last time you came in, when, when Royal Car Wash came in, they came in with complete plans. They, they had, proved that they had stacking areas for cars, so on and so forth. Their real estate people came in with, uh, potential deals they had that never materialized. I guess what, what we were disappointed in was the lack of plans last time to show what was really going to go there.
So, and that's exactly why we've prepared an actual site plan that shows the exact stacking capabilities.
Yep.
Um, and this is something that the planning board has, has really hammered out with us. Um, this is, this meets the requirements of a professionally-prepared site plan. Um, if you wanted a specific detail, I may be able to give you answers. Um, now, I don't know what other kind of plan I could provide.
Yeah, I, I think, now, uh, Corinne and Don could probably correct me if I'm wrong here, but, um, because they, I know they were on the board at the time. I thought one of the plans, we had, we had just a rough sketch without dimensions and so on and so forth.
Yes.
And it looked as if it needed multiple area variances as well to build the car wash.
And I remember talking to you about that at that point, and I said, I don't think we're going to need any, but I couldn't tell you exactly, because what I submitted at the beginning was a sketch plan. This is an actual site plan, I can tell you with one hundred percent certainty, zero area variances, none. Absolutely no area variances will be required.
Okay. And I think, I think that somewhat impacted our, our thoughts because-
I think I recall that.
It's like, it was like trying to put two pounds into one pound package to-
Yes.
-offer a use variance for that site.
Yes.
Because then, then multiple area variances would just further, you know, make, make it less desirable from our perspective as a zoning board.
Yes.
Uh, Corinne, do you, you, you recall any, um, any other details of that application? The prior application?
Well, I, I, I recall that when we, when this application was before the board in December of eighteen, um, that was exactly our concern. We didn't have this level of detail, we had a rough sketch that there'd be some vacuum stations and some self-car wash bays and, and, and essentially just trucked us what it'd be fine. Um, so, with that level of detail, lack of level of detail, the board was uncomfortable granting any type of a use variance. Um, this has certainly given more detail. I read through the minutes of the multiple times you've been before the planning board, and, um, you know, the, the plan has certainly been refined several times, the, the traffic has been taken into consideration. Um, the fact that you're looping the exit traffic out behind the, the plaza building answers a lot of the questions that the planning board had as well. Um, the plan-wise, this, this is, you know, certainly left up, left out much more so that, you know, we're, we're looking at a plan that's valid and, and appears on value to not even require any area variances. Um, you know, whether or not it meets the, the standards of the use variance, it, you know, is up, up to the board, are we satisfied with the, with the information as far as the, um, financials and the, the lack of any other interested party and such? Um, it, it's, it's easier for us to, to give consideration at this point, you do get available plan now in front of us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, to, to expand on what, what Corinne just said, we, we were reluctant to grant the use variance if the car wash was too much for that site.
Yes.
And we couldn't tell from the plans, because then, you know, then you come back, then the planning board has a problem.
Absolutely.
Because they have to stack. In other words, we want to hand the planning board something they can't deal with, so-
I don't love admitting when I'm wrong, but I was probably wrong then to say, no, just do it now. It's, we've had a great process with the planning board, um, really hammered out, um, some of the details, and I think it's a better design now, too.
Now, maybe, do we actually have an affidavit from the marketing people stating that, the market?
Yes, yes.
Do you have it in hand?
Yes, it should be.
Because that's got it. Yes, I was just looking for it in my package here. It's the, in the package, it's just-
Barry, I know, uh, I, I do not have an affidavit from Susan Woods or Jim Richards as far as the, uh, economics of it. Uh, furthermore, I believe Mark IV owned the property back in nineteen ninety, nineteen nine, uh, eighties. Uh, so, I'd like to make sure that that figure is, uh, that, you know, that their purchase price, uh, of that, as reflected in their, um, cost analysis of this property. I understand that they, that sell it from one corporation to the other, but I certainly would like to have the whole history on that. Thank you.
Good, good point, Don.
Excellent. Just address that briefly, and I, and I can get you that, I don't honestly know who owned it, but when we do transfer, um, properties internally, um, we have to at least book somewhat close to fair market value for it, for tax purposes. Otherwise, it's a gift and you're taxing yourself differently. Either way, it, I'm sure it's a little bit less than fair market value, but that goes in our favor towards financial hardship, because we actually paid less for it than what it, what we could have paid. Um, and we're still not able to make a financial, reasonable financial return. But Don, I can absolutely get you, uh, some, some more detail.
I don't think we specifically have a problem with the car wash at this point, um, but to Don's point, it's an excellent point, because, um, we really wouldn't be doing our due diligence if we didn't see that, that data as a board.
Absolutely, and you know what, if I, if we had known this was coming, I probably would have-
Mr. Chairman, I, I do, I do have that, uh, I, I do have those affidavits, this, uh, the town attorney. Um, and I do have the, uh, I do have the financial breakdown, I don't know if the board has that, but there's certainly a number of questions I'd like to ask about the, uh, the operating expenses, so that I can kind of make hazardous sales out of this, uh, this financial statement.
I don't believe we have the detail that you have, John. Um, I'm just looking for the packet I have here, I don't-
I think it's exhibit D.
Yeah, this is, the use variance is more a money issue than it is-
Absolutely.
Uh, you know, how far is the property line issue, so I think we really need some, we need some more data. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we're opposed to it, but I think the members of the board would like to see this data, so that we have something concrete to base our decision on.
So the data provided, and I'm, I'm going to request that we continue this, obviously, um, but the data provided is literally all of our operating expenses, income, and income and expense statements, the only financial data we, it's all of the financial data.
All right, well, the more you can give us for us to make the decision, the better.
Uh, Don, would you say it would be helpful if I had a finance person here next time to ask questions? Well, I think Godwin lives in Webster.
I, I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell whether he said Don or John or Thor. Um, you know, I, I think-
Um, you know, I, I think the, um, the documents that I received, um, you know, just before seven o'clock from you at my request, I think they're pretty straightforward, but, you know, there's gonna be some questions that are gonna be asked, uh, for information behind the numbers, and, you know, if you're prepared to answer those, I, I don't think you need an in-house, uh, accountant, but as long as you can handle the numbers. I, I just can't fill one answer, for example. Uh, you know, you've got land improvements in 2004 of, uh, about 180,000, and the top of the document reflects that its costs incurred for only these 2.3 acres, which is the lot in question. And, and one, one question would be, you know, the, the, uh, the document is obviously attempting to show that, um, you know, you're losing your shirt on this property, but I'm assuming that the 180,000 in, uh, improvements likely were not just for that lot, but have spread across the plans of development, which I think you said were in, they were about 2004. I'm not certain of that, but those are some of the numbers that I think the board probably has questions about. If, if you go through it, you can answer all those. I, I don't know that we need more than you, but you need to, obviously, have all the backup knowledge, not necessarily documentation, but backup knowledge on these numbers.
I'm bringing somebody. But it, just to address that question, John, 'cause I remember asking it two years ago, um, that $180,000, and then the next year, there's another similarly high number. That's what was allocated.
That's 447.
Yeah, that, that's what was allocated to this parcel. The actual stormwater improvements cost like 800,000, and then, and then the site improvement costs, cost, you know, I don't know, 400,000. So, that's actually that parcel's percentage, but I just happen to know that off the top of my head, but I'll get, I'll get educated on this and, and, uh, be able to give you the...
Because, because that lot is just sitting there without anything on it but dirt or, or, uh, or loose stone, they, they might wanna know what you guys spent a quarter of a million on that board just for that lot.
Giant pond, but, but yes, I will give you specific details.
Okay.
Yeah, frankly...
There's a, there's a plethora, um, of case law, as you know, on this issue, and what, uh, trial courts and appellate courts are looking for in, in terms of, um, making that hardship case and uniqueness of it. Um, I'm not suggesting the board's gonna turn it down, but just so the record, um, you know, totally intact, um, you know, I think that would be a, a compelling part of, of the case, so, so give us some more time to get your ducks in the hole.
Great. Just so nobody leaves here thinking that those aren't the exact, actual numbers. Those aren't numbers we came up with in October 2018. Those were numbers we pulled off our computer system that were actually entered into computer system in 2004 as expenses.
Okay, well...
That was just a printout. Nobody put those numbers together for me. That's just what the numbers are, but I'll get you details about them.
Would you, uh, would you wanna add anything, or would you care to table till...
I would request to table this to, uh, what, June? Is that, or you have another May?
Um, yeah, we got one more May.
Technically, uh, the 26th is not a meeting date because it falls after Memorial Day.
Okay.
Um, so, the 9th would be the next one.
The 9th?
Yeah, June 9th.
So, you request table June 9th?
Yes, please. Thank you all very much.
If we did that date, uh, at least a week ahead of time, to have time, time to study it a little bit?
Absolutely.
At least a week, even, even today. You had something, is that you, John?
Yeah, um, Mr. Nadler, you know, I, I suppose it might be, and I don't know if the board has the affidavit of Susan Woods. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but, you know, there's probably efforts and, um, opinions and a sense of the market, uh, in between the lines of this affidavit, and, and the level of difficulty, um, you know, may be easier appreciated if, if she was there. That's just my opinion.
That's a great idea, and I can tell you, she will be here. Both she and our chief financial officer live in Webster, and every time I have a meeting, I invite them, and they say, "No way." But they will be here, and they will be thrilled to see you all.
Uh, maybe, maybe by June 9th, we'll be able to have more people in the boardroom. The situation changes by the day, so, um, you know, that might be to our advantage if, if more can be allowed.
Absolutely. I'm bringing them.
All right.
Just so we can, just so we can get out for a drink afterwards.
Applicant has requested to table until the June 9th meeting, but...
7th.
Okay. So, let's, Don? Don, the applicant...
Do you want to enter for two weeks? I hear it on mute. Uh, yeah, I...
Okay, yeah, Corinne?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And Barry says aye, so we'll see you then, and we'll look forward to seeing your paperwork ahead of that, ahead of that date.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Now, we had the Twitter stuff, and should we get that into the record for this meeting, or just wait because it was tabled?
For the, uh...
There are people who are trying to comment on the car wash.
Oh, um, well, why don't we wait till next meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, there's a point, because the applicant's not going to respond to it at this point in time.
I do not...
So, that's, okay, uh, we have to do some, uh, do some meeting minutes, but what we do is, let's conclude the public portion of this meeting. Thanks for tuning in, and, uh, happy Memorial Day, and we'll see you on June 9th. Thank you.